Welcome to Select Board Meeting, January 30th, 2024. Please join the board in a pledge to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to modifications made to the open meeting law by the Massachusetts State Legislature, this meeting is going to take place in a hybrid format. Members of the board may be joining us in person here at the Great Hall at Town Hall. They may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public who wish to attend this meeting may do so by joining us at the Great Hall here at Town Hall or by joining us on Zoom on the link on the agenda that is on the Town website. People may also view the meeting by tuning into Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we have an executive session on the agenda. The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And this is in relation to 22 Mary B. Lane. Unless there is an objection, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session at this time.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The Board will be returning approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you. Second. Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion or questions? Seeing none. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
And Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Going to move on to the agenda items. The loitering bylaw? Kate?
Good evening. Dana Flynn, Chief of Police. We're here tonight to discuss the proposed for adding a loitering bylaw for the town of Plymouth. This came about numerous complaints of large groups of people hanging out in local parking lots along the waterfront, interrupting and bothering the nearby residents. Currently, we have nothing in our bylaws that allow us to really, that have any teeth, that allow us to solve the problem in an efficient manner. I'll let Attorney McKay discuss the language.
Thank you. So there is an article that's going to be on the special spring warrant with proposed bylaw language, which I drafted. I spoke to the AG's office. They have a municipal law unit that looks at the bylaws after they're written and issues decisions on the validity and the constitutionality of bylaws. I did forward my proposed language to them. I have not heard back from them yet, just as an aside, and their response is not guaranteed to be a preapproval of any sort, but in trying to craft the bylaw that would serve the purpose for the police department as well as a bylaw that would actually be able to be enforced, I did look at previous decisions of that unit from all the way back, I think, till 2010. So I did craft some language. I met with Chief Flynn, and we kind of reviewed it to see if it might be able to address some of the issues that they are facing and the groups that are congregating. So I'm not sure if you'd like me to read it, if you'd like me to answer more questions. I don't know if you have a draft in front of you.
We do not.
Would you like me to read, or would that be helpful?
Yes.
Okay. So what I had suggested was, "No person shall stay on a street, sidewalk, or parking lot with the intent to cause public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, or recklessly create a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm. This section shall not be construed or used to curtail, abridge, or limit the right of any person to exercise the right of peaceful persuasion, guaranteed by Chapter 149, Section 24, or to curtail, abridge, or limit the intent of any statute of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." So we're trying to strike a balance between giving a group notice if they are, in fact, creating public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, and not restricting them from being able to peacefully assemble, engage in peaceful persuasion, or limit any other rights that they may have under this, through any statute of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And as I said, I have submitted it up to the AG's unit. They do know that the deadline for warrant article submissions is Friday the 2nd, and I'm still hoping to hear back from them, but I have not heard anything yet.
Any questions from the Board, Mr. Helm?
Would you, would you please reread the first part of that, since we don't have it in front of us?
Certainly. The first part of it was, "No person shall stay on a street, sidewalk, or parking lot with the intent to cause public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, or recklessly create a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm."
So maybe this is for Chief Flynn. Say this were a bylaw. Does that cause issues with large numbers of people parking? Or do they have to be out of their cars or out of conveyances? Do they have to be congregated together as individuals?
Again, if they're congregating even in their vehicles, if they are causing the nuisance or alarm, we would be able to enforce that.
Okay. And you just, my second question. What do you mean by causing alarm? Concern? The neighbors being concerned about drug use or other behaviors? Is that alarm? I mean, what is alarm?
Alarm could be disturbing the peace, loud music, and that sorts.
What if they're just sitting there surreptitiously and quietly taking drugs? Or having sex in their cars? What if, what if they're not causing alert?
Well, well, the language-
What is the threshold of alarm? Causing alarm?
So if I may answer and perhaps seek Chief Flynn's input a little further, I think the impetus of the bylaw was- Oh, sorry. I think the driving force of the bylaw was the amount of, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, complaints and calls that were coming into the police department regarding certain areas and reports that were being made. So my, my thought was that if the police department is getting that many reports, that many calls, that many complaints, that would be the public calling in for annoyance, alarm, other things that are, in fact, going on that they're witnessing, that they're asking for police intervention on.
So one, one more question, if you all don't mind. Chief Flynn, can you give us, without getting too much detail, some of these complaints?
Sure. We had one pocketing of concern that for years and years and years, even from when I was growing up, was a, was a great place for us to hang out in the warm weather. The issue is, along with that comes loud music, yelling, screaming, such, such as that. A lot of times, we will, we will get complaints, calls for service regarding the annoyance or the issue. We will go down and address it, remove the people from, from the area, but they just return. Where they, where it is a public lot, there are no hours of services, opened up 24 hour, 24/7. We have nothing in our toolbox, if you will, that'll allow us to nip the problem in the bud so we can get on to other things.
So this, and I promised this in my last, this would be in regard only to public parking lots, not private?
It'd be, it'd be all public areas of the town.
But not if this behavior is occurring in a private parking lot?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is a bylaw that I think we should have had years ago. This is, there's a real need for this bylaw. We're a tourist town, and, you know, we, our tourists, our residents also should not be intimidated. And I can tell you firsthand, I saw this. And I, it, behind East Bay Grill in the parking lot where the Harbor Masters shack is, not shack, Taj Mahal, but is, when I, I haven't been, I haven't worked in East Bay Grill for over two years, so, but when I was working there, and it probably still goes on today, I don't know, but constantly, we had cars right up to our fence, music going, smoking pot, and we, we actually had to go into that parking lot more than once and almost get into fights, had to call the police. It was a nightmare back there. And they weren't residents either. These were all kids from, and I know because I asked, they were all from different parts of, they put a, a thing on Facebook or whatever they use now for social media, "Let's meet down at the, at the, at the town ramp," and they'd all come down there. And it was very disruptive to our business. And, and they're all, you know, younger kids, and it was a nightmare. Now with this bylaw, they can, they can kick those kids out and tell them they're going to get fines if, if you come back. So it's something that, it's needed, and if it's happening there, it's probably happening in a lot of different public parking lots in Plymouth. So I just think it's got to be word of right, it's got to be enforced right. I was, my question is, will this help us with the aggressive panhandling tool? That I know there's been an issue, and I know I've talked to the chief about doing something like this. I know panhandling is legal. Asking for money on the street is legal. We can't stop them. But aggressive panhandling, this, this would be something we could stop with this bylaw.
I believe this may help us with that. I know the, the locations you're speaking of, up off of Sam Street. How we deal with that or address that is when we catch those individuals interfering with the flow of traffic.
Right.
Panhandling in and of itself is protected by the Constitution. But if, this may, this may be a, another tool we can use as well.
Right. And not to, I don't want to pick on anybody, but we do have a group that sometimes, I know around Memorial Hall, when there's events, I've seen, I've seen, you know, a kind of aggressive, and there's people coming from shows, and they get very intimidated, intimidated by this. And, and they're usually pretty good, they're usually, if somebody says something, they'll leave. But like I said, I'm not trying to create, pick on any one group, but this is something that, you know, the police are going to have to be very well trained on. It's going to put a little pressure on you folks, but I think we need this. I really do. There's, there's a need for this in, in a resort town like Plymouth. So anyway, I hope this passes, so thank you.
Mr. Canty?
So I guess this, my questions would be for the chief. So you say you're, you're getting calls about this type of behavior right now, and you just don't have this tool in the toolbox to deal with it. Is that right?
Right now, all, all we can really do is ask them to leave. Like, like a lot of, lot of, some of the types of calls, a lot of these people, or individuals know what's coming. They have ways of launching on radio, so when we get there, the disturbance or the annoyance is over.
Yep.
And I've been down there myself, and I've spoken to these groups of people and, you know, just asked for the cooperation that, you know, tell them to enjoy the town, but look, be respectful of the neighbors, and next week, they're back.
And these people without, I don't need their names, but their characteristics, are they, are they younger individuals? Are they older individuals?
Yeah.
Like teenagers or young twenties?
No, teenagers, early twenties.
Socioeconomic group, if you had to speculate?
No. No.
Any racial makeup? Are they white, black, otherwise?
They're mostly kids that drive from towns to the north and northwest of us.
Okay. I guess part of my concern, I mean, these types of laws, I'm not saying it's your intention to, but these types of laws tend to be weaponized against poor people and people of color in, in communities. So I just have some reluctance to, I understand wanting to be able to respond to residents' needs and being able to encourage people to move along. You know, I'm not saying that that's a bad thing inherently, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out, historically, these have been used in a way that certain segments of society get targeted by them a lot more than others.
That's not our intent at all. And again, this, our, our goal is always our, the way we operate is we, de-escalation, if you will.
Right.
Cooperation, conversation, education.
Right.
You know, this, this will give us a tool for those repeat offenders, if you will.
I understand. And I, I don't mean to imply that your intention was to do that, it's just, it is something that I have seen in other, in other communities. So some of the, the issues that you mentioned, though, such as disturbing the peace and disorderly conduct, those are already criminal offenses, right?
They are.
So is having an open container of alcohol in public?
Correct.
So is trespassing?
Yes.
So it seems like you have some related tools if you're seeing other conduct when you're having, because you can, you can, you can have a threshold inquiry, and you can see if any of those types of offenses are occurring with an investigative staff, right? So I guess I don't fully understand the need to have a loitering bylaw, too.
So all the issues you mentioned, in order to first take immediate action, have to be within our presence.
Right.
Then we also have to have cooperation from the reporting party.
Right.
A lot of the callers are anonymous. So again, without, without a, a good witness or conduct being observed by the officers, prosecution is, would most likely be futile. Again, we don't, we're not looking to criminalize these people. I mean, but it's not a criminal offense. These would be civil fines, civil bylaws, wouldn't go on their, their criminal record. Again, we're not looking to be extreme. We'd look, we'd look at cooperation, but this is for when we don't get the cooperation instead of, you know, bringing, dragging them forward to the judge.
Yep.
You know, we're looking at the least amount of enforcement action as possible.
I understand. I have some other questions for Town Council. Thank you, Chief. So the limitations on street sidewalk in particular, streets and sidewalks are some of the most protected area, public areas for public speech. So I guess having public inconvenience could include protests. Annoyance could, or alarm could include a reaction from a resident or, or business owner or something to a type of, of protest or demonstration. So how, I, I have concerns about it opening us up to potential legal act, I mean, we had it for years, we had a sign bylaw about signs that had, the ACLU ended up getting involved because someone had some colorful metaphors about the President of the United States that they'd like to share with their neighbors and passersby. So I, I guess I'm just, I don't want us to head down another similar path, so could you comment on your level of, of comfort with that language being in there?
So the second sentence where the section shall not be, I'm sorry, construed or used to curtail, abridge, or limit any right of any person to exercise the right of peaceful persuasion.
Right.
And then it goes on to also say that it's not going to be used to limit or curtail or abridge the intent of any statute of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The intent there is to allow for peaceful persuasion and demonstrations. That is all protected. And this is not intended to infringe upon or curtail or interfere with any of those rights that people have in order to demonstrate, persuade, and protest. Certainly be happy to add some more restrictive or specific language, if that's a concern under that second sentence. But the, the general aim of this is public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, not otherwise constitutionally protected, perhaps. I could add that modifier in. But I think it's, it, it is not intended to interfere with those rights. But there is conduct, I think, that the police, if I understand them correctly, have been responding to that has occurred in those areas that is not constitutionally protected that they are still having trouble responding to. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief. I think it's a, a fine line, definitely, and I expect-
I agree.
I expect that there would be a response back if it was passed, much like the other responses that I've seen in the municipal law unit, indicating that before such a bylaw is enforced, close consultation with Town Council is recommended to make sure and understand that it is enforced correctly and not overbroadly or not incorrectly.
We just, it's, seems, it may, there may be close cases where it's maybe a difficult call for a responding officer to be making that type of a determination within moments of arriving on a scene. And then that opens the town up to potentially, if they were on the wrong side of that line, to litigate, even if the town ends up prevailing in a lawsuit of that nature, that costs us money. So I guess, I understand that it's annoying for the chief and his, his personnel to be responding constantly to the same types of issues, to the same types of people, at the same types of places, right? But we're not getting sued there. This is something that could open us up to, even if we would prevail in the litigation, it's still an expense. Whereas we have, they might not be the, the perfect tool for, but we have a tool that can, in some of these situations, dissuade some folks from continuing. And Chief, sorry to keep switching back, but are you, what's the success rate when you respond to these types of calls and you ask people to move on, that they move on? I mean, there's some that are not moving on, or they're coming right back when you leave, but are there other people that are moving on?
They move on, we leave, they're back.
Always, or is it?
The majority of the time.
The majority of the time? Okay.
And again, these are, these are calls to us from residents.
Yep.
Looking for our assistance in, in enhancing their quality of life, if you will. And we know, we know now in conversations we've had with a number of these residents that, right now, what, what the, these groups of people, you know, the groups that congregate are, it's constitutionally protected. It's, as I said, it's a public lot, open 24/7. There's no fees involved. But we, our residents are, are concerned about their quality of life.
I understand. Thank you.
Derek, did you want to say something that I know Charlie?
Well, I, I just wanted, I'm sorry for coming in late, but I just wanted to preface a lot of this, and, you know, the chief hit the nail on the head, this is a quality of life issue. So I can personally say I've, I received dozens of complaints from the residents in certain areas of this community. We, the chief and I have met with these residents who have filed these complaints. They've shared stories and given us videos of the behavior of these individuals in these public places, to the point where they believe that scanners, that they have scanners, so when a 911 call is made, they quickly leave the area so that they don't have to be confronted by the police department. And so this bylaw is before you this evening as to not replicate some of our missteps with the nuisance bylaw. So the nuisance bylaw was a quality of life bylaw that we were trying to remedy some of the issues here in town. When I approached the chief, I says, "How do we solve these problems that we're having with these individuals in these public places?" His response was, very quickly, "We need a loitering bylaw. We need the tool in order to be able to enforce, you know, this type of misbehavior." So that, so we're bringing this forward to you this evening. The warrant closes by the end of the week. If this has to go back, because we need to provide some further detail or some meat around the bones around this bylaw, we're happy to do that. But we want to bring this in front of the Select Board this evening so that we don't incur the previous misstep of the nuisance bylaw when it went to town meeting and it wasn't fully baked.
Charlie?
Respectfully, Selectman Canty, I know during your day job is defending the less fortunate at the courts, but I can assure you that the folks I'm talking about, that I lived 20-plus years at East Bay Grill, watching it at night, especially on the weekends. And I, the racial profile, I'll give it to you, is, this was Caucasian, rich kids with no respect for authority. And they come from a lot of affluent towns in the South Shore, and I know that because I asked them, "Where are you from?" So multiple times, you know, I was always in a shirt and tie, respectfully dressed, stood up to try and talk to them. I get, you know, some of them were respectful, for the most part, they weren't. And, and we had to call the police multiple, multiple times. So that's what you're seeing. And unfortunately, you know, there's not a lot to do for the underage, you know, the late teens. You know, I mean, some of them have fake IDs, probably go into the bars, I mean, but there's not a lot for young youth to do. So that's why they congregate in these, in these, in these parking lots. And we, you know, I think we need more activities, youth centers, whatever, something to help us. But for right now, we got to protect the citizens and the businesses of Plymouth and our tourists. And this is, this is not, this is a good bylaw, and all we're asking people to do is just be respectful, okay? Wherever you are in, in public, that's all. And I, so, I support this 100%. I wish we had this 20 years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Helm? Then Mr. Mahoney?
Just a, a quick question. I noticed that beaches and public beaches and public parks are not mentioned in this. Is there a reason for that?
We already have bylaws in place and rules in place that address or regulate the conduct in those places. So these are for locations that we, that we don't have those rules in place.
Question for Kate. Are you going to be asking for a vote tonight?
No.
Okay. Good answer.
Mr. Helm, so he stole my thunder on that one. No, that's okay. So I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made, and, you know, it's a fine line here. You're not looking for a vote tonight, but the key variable is, who's weighing in at this at the state level on the language you provided?
So I had contacted the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office and spoke, I spoke to a particular employee up there, and she had indicated, I think the copy that you have in front of you is actually my email to the unit. I had written it to all three of the people in that unit, and as I said, they said they would be happy to review language. It wouldn't count as a preapproval or a preauthorization, just that they would be happy to look at it in conjunction with the other decisions that have been rendered in the past, which I also had looked at, and they were happy to review it and provide some type of feedback, again, not-
Some guidance, some feedback, and then we could-
Anything that they might potentially see, but again, certainly nothing that would function as a preapproval or a preauthorization. Because after each bylaws passed, the town clerk sends the language up to the AG's office, to the municipal unit, and it's only at that point, after they review it, that they are willing to issue a determination. So it would be just kind of a pre-step to avoid, hopefully, any problems.
So the intent is to gather more data and come back, what, in a couple of weeks, looking for a vote?
I would still like their feedback at this point, and I'm still reaching out to them. As I said, they do know that our, the warrant deadline was February 2nd, so I'm still hoping to get something from them, but certainly, that would be my intent.
Get that from them, provide it to us, and then come back after that-
Yes.
For continued discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, we're not seeking a vote to, to support the proposed draft bylaw this evening. This is more of an, of an introduction to a proposed bylaw. If the Board desires, we would proceed with keeping this on the warrant, and then we can add, during our warrant presentation, our article presentations, we would then come back with a more refined document. And, you know, if any one of the Board members want to work with us, we're happy to do that, to bring back a more refined document. But what we need to know tonight is, do you want us to continue to proceed? If not, then this will not be on the warrant, the special town meeting warrant.
So, you didn't want to vote, but you want us to tell you.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chi, I have no problem with proceeding on this, I think Mr. Brindisi is on point with respect to the last town meeting and the demolition bylaw, you know, we want to take those lessons back, and we don't want to rush anything.
Right.
We want to give the chief the tools that he needs to get the job done. I mean, if we can get this done, you know, straddle that fine line with the language is correct, without rushing it, I don't have a problem with that, but if we can't, we need to hold it until October, I'm okay with that, too.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we authorize, or agree, that town, town council and town manager move forward with their, whatever steps they need, to bring a more refined article in front of us, and, and to possibly town meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Blitzer. Any other discussion? Mr. Canti?
So, I understand the intent of what is being done here, and I, I just have, my concerns are not directed towards Plymouth Police Department or its leadership, but how I've seen similar bylaws used in other municipalities, including in Plymouth County, has created more problems for the communities than they have solved, more issues for the communities than they have solved. And I intend to vote no on moving forward at this time. I will keep an open mind if it does proceed on the warrant, when we have that more in-depth hearing later. But I'm going to be a tough sell on this, because I've seen how it's worked in the past, and it has been problematic, to say the least. And I think that, I mean, one of the issues with that nuisance bylaw was neighbor against neighbor. And if this, if that's neighbor against neighbor, I mean, this is neighbor against neighbor. It wasn't that long ago that people were complaining about people from New Bedford being in Morton Park. How'd they know they were from New Bedford? That's all. I, I just think there's more problems here, and I am very reluctant, and it's, it's nothing against the people in this room, or the officers on the street, it's just how I've seen this play out before. Alarm for different members of this community, unfortunately, not everyone in this community is all that nice. Represents 60,000 people, and a few of them, I love them all, but a few of them are harder to love than others, let's say that. So, that's just my concern, so, I'm going to be voting no, but I appreciate you, you moving forward on this, to this extent, and if it doesn't get a vote, maybe you could continue to work on it for October, or another town meeting, but that's my position at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
For discussion. Mr. Canti, I disagree, the nuisance bylaw, first of all, was not about neighbor and its neighbor. It was created because we have buildings in this town that need to be torn down or rehabbed. That was the intent of it. So, you miss, you might have misunderstood it, but that's, that's, that was the intent of that bylaw. So, and as far as this, if you don't think there's a need for this, then you, you got to get out of the house on, on the weekends, come on, come, come down to the waterfront, come down to, come down to downtown Plymouth, and see what goes on. Get onto Middle Street parking lot, watch the drug dealing in that parking lot. Get out to the East Bay, behind there, get out to, by the lobster huts, all these parking lots, there's a lot of activities going on down there. And I, forget about what's going on in probably some of, maybe in South Plymouth places, that, there's, it's, it's, this stuff is real, and the police, there's not a lot they can do about it. So, it's, you're talking about fines, not arrests, and if it turns into, it, it, if, it's what I've seen, it's going to turn into disorderly conducts, probably, because, you know, they, the lack of respect is, it's, but it's out there, it's real. This stuff happens. And if word gets out, trust me, word gets out, that this is going on in Plymouth, believe me, the activity will stop real quick, because it's all over social media. So, we need something to help to curtail this activity, this illegal activity.
Any more comments? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canti?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Before we get into the articles, I'm going to move the special spring town meeting warrant article discussion, and I believe.
Yes.
Will we have counsel in the room?
Yeah, while Attorney McKay is here, I want to bring this up.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to request that we do a special, a special bylaw, I mean, article for legislation, excuse me, I draw a blank, home rule petition, yeah. I want to add a few package store licenses to the town of Plymouth. We are now at capacity, and I've gotten a lot of requests from South and Southwest Plymouth for, for alcohol, they, they, there's no stores down there that sell alcohol. And so, I looked, I, we dealt with Lee Hartman, Lisa Johnson, and licensing, Attorney McKay, myself, and Attorney Canti was actually involved. And we looked at the areas, and it's, it's very clear, if you look at the map, everybody has a map, and you can see Precinct 17, wide open, all the way down, 16, and, and nine. Those are the three areas that we've seen, like, the, the growth, and the population growth is all heading that way. And there's no, there's no liquor stores in those areas. And then you look, you look where all the liquor stores are, and they're all along Route 3A, they're in West Plymouth, there's a, there's a cluster in North Plymouth, and the closest, there's a couple in Cedarville, that's the closest to those areas, and there's one in, in Pine Hills. So, there's a need for this. So, I'm requesting this, this special legislature to, to get three, ask for three from the state, three additional package store licenses. It doesn't mean that we, we have to give those out, it's, it's only going to be, it's, it's going to be, and Attorney McKay can explain the wording of it, and what we're trying to do here. We're trying to make this, you know, I'm a business, a business-friendly select board member, and I don't want to hurt competition and the businesses that are already here. So, so this is on a need basis, and it's, and it's providing a service for our residents. But I'd like to defer to Attorney McKay, she can tell you about the wording in this.
Thank you. The wording for the special legislation would simply be to request three additional licenses to be in, granted in precincts nine, 16, and 17, to cover those areas on the map. And if you, if you have the map that I have in front of you, you can see 16 is the, I guess, light pink, or maybe light purple, 17 kind of looks peach, and then nine is, is green. When you look at that nine, you can see the store at Sandy Pond is down there, and then 17 has, based on this map, nothing, and 16 also does not have any liquor stores in that precinct either. So, the wording of the legislation would be putting those three licenses in those three precincts, and they would be limited to those precincts forever. They would be tied to the precinct map that's submitted at the time of the legislation.
I'd like to just add, if I can, I've gotten questions about where those could be placed. Well, right now, there's probably only two that I can see. There's the Red Brook Development is, possibly could request something. There's the store at Sandy Pond is already there, they have beer and wine, they could possibly be looking for, other than that, there's, there's no, there's nothing zoned down in that area right now, but, that's right now. I'm looking to the future, I'm looking to, I'm watching the development, all heading that way, and I'm just, I'm just trying to be proactive, and, because I'm looking for any kind of economic development that I can get for the town of Plymouth. But this is, again, it's a service to our community, and, and there's, there's a need for this. So, that's, that's my reason for this legislation, so.
Mr. Canti?
This, while we have Mr. Hartman here, this may be a better question for Mr. Hartman. But where, in these three precincts, how many, off the top of your head, I apologize, but how many locations do you think are zoned in a way that they could have a liquor store there, whether they're, whether it's the store at Sandy Pond, or some brand new place in these three precincts?
Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development for the town. So, there are no re, there's, so first of all, we don't have in our bylaw something that says the sale of alcohol, so we deal with it as retail. So, where retail is allowed, is where this can go. The town, on the permitting side, just says retail, it's up to this board whether that retail includes alcohol. There are really just two locations, there are no commercially zoned properties that are identified in these three precincts, but there are two locations, one pointed out already, the, the store at Little Sandy Pond Campground, that has, in their special permit for a campground, the ability to have retail, and then the Red Brook Development, that in their special permit, they have the ability to have retail. I could, there's nothing that would prevent, say, two or three liquor licenses in Red Brook, might be unlikely, but it would be Red Brook by special permit, and Little Sandy Pond Campground Store by special permit.
So, is there nothing at all in precinct 16, then?
Which one, 16?
16 is the.
No, no, so, that comes into some of the Pine Hills property, but the Pine Hills requirement is, all the retail has to be contiguous, and they've already set that as north of Clark Road. So, the only place I thought of was Pine Hills, but because it's south of Clark Road, it would not be allowed there. So, those are the only two places. Hypothetically, somebody else could come in for another campground and seek a store in that campground, I think that's unlikely, but.
Okay. All right. And Attorney McKay, I believe you had had some conversations with ABCC about how we should, what a best practice might be for issuing these licenses? Could you expand upon that?
Certainly. For the three licenses, for instance, that would be requested, after speaking with the ABCC, I think the best practice would be for, if the legislation passes, for there to be, I think it's Lisa Johnson, she would put out the advertisement indicating that there are three licenses available to be granted in precincts nine, 16, and 17. Not sure exactly how she goes about the mechanics, but put the notice out that there are three, accept interested applications, expressions of interest, and then hold, for the licensing authority to hold hearings for all interested parties, so that everybody comes in and is, has a chance to ask for the license and to present their case. And then, after all applications and all parties have been heard, then to make the decision, the licensing board would decide, licensing authority will decide where they go, or who they go to. So, if you have three licenses, and less than three applicants come before you, that's, that's one way that it could play out. If you have more than three applicants that come before you, then a choice would be made as to, according to criteria, as to who to give them to.
And did, in the event that there were more than three, did they expand upon whether it would be beneficial to issue the three at that time, or to, to only issue some of them, or is there any issues with keeping some of the licenses back, where they're geographically limited, or anything like that?
The response I got was that if all the licenses are advertised, which they should be, three, and there are more than three applicants, all, all people should be heard, and three licenses should be given out. So, we, you would award them all at the same time.
Okay. And that's assuming they met whatever threshold, criteria for getting a license?
Yes, assuming they were approved, and they, they had done everything they needed to do, yes.
Right, okay.
Assuming they were proper applicants.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Helm, then Mr. Blitzer?
So, we have 16 all alcohol licenses? Correct?
Currently in use right now, yes.
Currently in use right now.
That's my understanding, yeah.
How many are we actually allowed to have, based upon our population?
I believe currently, right now, if it was just based on the population, the town would have, you, I don't know the exact number you should have, but it's known that the town is over the number that they are supposed to have, according to population.
So, we are already over the number we're supposed to have?
Yes, and it's my understanding that was as a result of, that, through no fault of the town, that was an issue with the ABCC, yes.
So, we already have more than we're supposed to have. Have you had discussions with the ABCC?
Yes.
Okay. Do you get a feeling that they would be amenable to a home rule petition that would ask for three more liquor stores, all liquor licenses, in a town that is already over its state statute capacity, or per capita allowance?
I'm not sure if I would characterize it as amenable, but when I spoke to the ABCC and, and kind of laid out that the town was over what they were supposed to be at, and that they would be seeking additional ones, that, that was kind of taken in stride, there was no, you can't do that, or you have to ask.
No one's head exploded on you?
No, no. And, and, not to cut you off, I apologize, the gentleman, the ABCC, actually referred me to other special legislation that had been put forward, that, for instance, he referred me to an act that Boston had, it's a very detailed act, or a very detailed request for legislation, they granted a few, more than a few liquor licenses, based on geographic area and type of business, and, and he was, I would say, somewhat encouraging that we could look at that legislation as examples, and certainly use that.
As precedent?
Yes.
Okay. So, on, just comparing some, kind of a statement that you made with something that Mr. Blitzer said. Mr. Blitzer said, "We don't have to give them out." What you said kind of indicated that if people apply, we advertise, and if we get three valid applications or more, we have to give them out.
So, I think the best practice would be to advertise, and if there are more than three applicants, to hear all the applicants and give all three. But if you only got one applicant, or two applicants, that third one would still be available for the future.
But say we got three, let's not more, just three, that are allowed. Two in precinct 16, obviously, unless a resident is allowed to apply for one, just in case we rezone their house, okay? So, let's just say, two in Red Brook, and, and also, so clearly, in precinct nine, this only, this is a request for a all liquor license for the Sandy Pond, the store at Sandy Pond, period. Anything in nine, that's the thing in nine. Am I correct? That's the only, that is the only retail in precinct nine?
So, as I start to think, think, and think, you do have Atlantic Country Club down there, but I think it'd be a real stretch to say that a liquor license would be, the retail allowed there is related to the golf course. So, if I started to think about another, that would be the only one, and I think that's beyond a stretch, to say, you could have a liquor store at a golf course, because the retail that would be there.
Could be one hell of a golf course.
Has to be related to the use itself, so, to have like a purchase price would be difficult.
Yeah, so, basically, what we're talking about here is the store at Sandy Pond, this is legislation for the store at Sandy Pond, and two other places probably, or one, one of them in Red Brook, and then maybe one off the side. So, say we get two, one for something in Red Brook, and one for the store at Sandy Pond. Okay? Do we have to give them to them?
I think as the licensing authority, as Mr. Canti indicated earlier, they would all have to be proper applicants, they would.
Yeah, sure, say they are proper applicants, but I'm sure the store at Sandy Pond, they're very proper, I love that store. Okay? And I'm sure whatever goes into Red Brook would be quite at the level as the Long Ridge Wine and Spirits up in, up in the Pine Hills. Okay? So, I'm sure that they're reputable, reputable people, wanting to operate a reputable business. Okay? So, I guess my question becomes, what criteria would the board be allowed to use to not give them out? Other than, say they meet the, you know, whatever background checks concept, what, what prevents us from just basically this being legislation that we're about to have two more liquor stores in town? have two more liquor stores in town?
Mr. Blitzer, I think, wants to answer, should I answer?
I'll answer that. If you have a store that has violations, if it's a store that exists, if it's a new store and you get somebody that does, doesn't pass Corey, doesn't have good character, that will be another...
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, okay, the concept of, we don't have to use them right away.
So...
Because that, that sounds to me like, if somebody passes Corey and all that stuff...
I'll explain, I'll explain where that came from, Mary. To do this act, it takes a lot of work. So we identified two areas, Red Brook and the Sandy Pond, the only really two areas down there, that, that, so we asked for, we asked for an extra liquor license, in case for the future development. And so, right now, there's, there's probably no one that, that would apply, because there's nothing down there right now, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So, as you look at the map, people can't see it at home, but this is wide open here. I don't know what kind of development's going to happen there that would have retail that might want one of these licenses. So that's why we asked for more than what we think we're going to be giving out. That's why, that's why I said that. I don't know if that, I don't know if that helps you, but as far as the applications go, if we turn down somebody, the ABC can all, they can, you know, they supersede us, so they can always give one, but, I don't know, but that helps you, but...
There's an appeals process through the ABCC if a license is denied, and I can certainly get you more information on that process and, and what factors, if you'd like, or if I can, if I can provide other information.
I'm sure the factors have been vetted over the years, and I'm sure they're very much about the background, the ownership, all of that sort of stuff. They aren't about where it is, or anything like that, or having threes for future development, or anything like that. So, you know, I just, that's, I was just trying to clarify this concept that we didn't have to give them out. You know, we pretty much, if these people are vetted and are, you know, could fulfill the obligations of owning a liquor store legally and morally and all that kind of stuff, and they apply, we can't not say no, basically, or they could go and appeal it.
Exactly.
Yeah, so there's, it's not really like we're holding these for future development. What we're doing is we're getting three more liquor licenses that will probably be asked, at least two of them asked for immediately, okay? So that's, that's not about future development, that's about the here and now. When the, when, you know, if the, you know, the, if the store at Sandy Pond is going to request, and somebody, I would imagine, will, when one becomes available, attempt to put one into Red Brook, that's the majority of the three that we're asking for. So we're not really holding them for future development. We're assuming that the future development is going to take place in Precincts 16, 17, and 9, okay? That's, that's an assumption, that that's where the future development. If we're, if we're doing this for future development, we are assu, not current development, that's a big, there's a big difference. If, if it is for current development, then that's a whole different thing. If we're holding it for future development, we are assuming that that is where the future development will occur, in those three precincts. That's what we're assuming. That may or may not be the case. So that's just the point I'm making.
Mr. Mahoney?
Lee, is it possible, okay, so is it possible that a third person applies hypothetically for the third license? And they don't have a current location, but they secure a license, they hold it for potential, they can't lock it up?
I think you could build that into your permitting process, but the best you could do is if you got a re, you couldn't, you would never get approval through the building department for any kind of retail. So I don't know how you could hold a license when you're legally not entitled to have that. And I, I think that's easily built into regulations to say, you're not given a license unless you're properly permitted for that use.
Okay, these individuals come forth and they apply for one of these quote-unquote three licenses, what's their, what's your financial investment in the, in that process to get, to get in front of this board and be considered for one of the three? How much are they paying? Is it $50?
I, I'm not, I don't know what the fee is that goes to Ms. Johnson when the application comes in. I can certainly get that for you, to figure out what that investment is, or lack thereof, what it takes to get that application put forward.
So, it's been a while, but we've seen these come before the board before, where they've wanted permission for transfer, Lee? And obviously, you know, when you get to the other 75% of the community, you know, in the other population centers and along the coast, I mean, these things are valuable. You know, if you can get your hands on one of the 16, even though I think we're only supposed to have 14, you know, I mean, that's a significant investment. And we've dealt with that in the past. I look at this process here, we're sitting here talking about, and I know there's a lot of state forests down here, but maybe, I don't know, it's going to be 25 square miles, fair amount of it's already open space, we understand that, but we're effectively handing two all alcohol licenses to basically one existing business, or one business that we expect to exist, in a dense residential development down there. So I guess my question is, why are we going to three?
And that might be the easy, go to two. That might be the easier one.
And then the second question is, are we handing these two pe, these two businesses a golden ticket, or are we restricting the value of that in the future, because the legislation is saying it can only be in these three precincts? Are we suppressing the value of that, because it can't be moved to another section? It can't go anywhere in the 100 square miles of the community? See where I'm, I don't want to hand this out for nothing, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, just want to point out, State Forest is state, and they'd be exempt from anything we do anyway, because they're exempt from local laws, so that...
I'm sure Mara's not going to propose a liquor store in there anytime soon. So, but, but you, you see where I'm going with this, I...
Mr. Jemlin?
Yes.
John, the reason why we picked those areas is because there was a lack of any all alcohol packages.
No, I understand, absolutely, I get it.
And the reason why we don't want them to be transferred to other areas is because we don't want to hurt the current businesses that are there. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to hurt the competition, that's why. So that's why we want to keep them in those areas. And the people that would, would apply would have to have a retail store already, okay, before they could apply to us, or they could be in the process of building one, but that, that's, that's who could apply. Somebody that's speculating maybe next year, this isn't a lobster license, this isn't, you know, a shelfist license or anything like that, this is, this is a serious business license, so. And I'm hoping, you know, economic development, I'm hoping maybe at some point there's another development down there, maybe a light industrial, maybe some kind of a, an area where they can use in their license. That's why we went for the extra license. In fact, we, we don't even have, we talk about Red Brook, but nobody, there's no store there right now, I know they're building a market, but there's no liquor store being built there. So we don't even know if Red Brook would be, would be one of those licenses. We, we, I'm assuming that the store at Sandy Pond might, because they have beer and wine, but they, you know, see what happens with that. But we could give one out and still have two for future development. It depends on who comes forward and meets the standards to, to have this license. So, and it's all about, it's about economic development, it's about a service to our residents, and believe me, I've gotten a lot of requests, a lot of requests when I started talking about this, so that people want this. So anyway, thanks.
Mr. Mahoney, to answer your question, I think it was your question, the all alcohol retail license is 1,800, beer and wine is 950.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the, oh, sorry, Mr. Canty?
And Kate, in terms of the geographic restriction, it's the current meets and bounds of 9, 16, and 17 forever?
If that's what's included in the legislation, yes. So it would be how the, how the, the current boundaries of 9, 16, and 17, and in order to delineate that, I think a map of the current precincts would be included with the special legislation, or, you know, the precinct map dated as of April 6th, 2024, whatever date we were adv, or asking for.
So that way, in 10, 20 years, when these precincts are spreading out or thinning out, they're, we're not moving these licenses around, they're, they're restricted to this?
Yes, they would be restricted to the, whatever is in existence at the time.
Okay. Mr. Blitzer, this question is for you, so...
Thank you, Mr. Canty.
We've had, we've had some discussion about the, the three versus two. Do you, if the board were inclined to reduce the number from three down to two?
Wouldn't have a problem.
Okay.
The, the reason why I asked for more is because there's a lot of work that's going to go into this, and I'd hate to think that two years from now, we have to want to do this again. So that, that's, that's my reason for, but whatever the board thinks, and, you know, we, we thought, we looked at the areas as far as competition, that's why we picked these areas, and Lee was, helped us with that, and if anybody wanted to change that, I don't see changing it, but I think those are the areas that, I mean, it's very clear on this map, that those areas are wide open, and hopefully, this might encourage some future development too, so. But if you want to go to two, that's, right now, that's, yeah, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it. I just was thinking of the future, though. Anyway, thanks.
If there's no other questions, I would be prepared to make a motion.
Any other questions?
Potentially a procedural question, if we are motioning to a vote?
Where, this is to, as we did when Charlie first brought an idea like this, we voted to include that on the warrant, just similar to what we just did with the nuisance by, or the loitering bylaw, my mistake.
This has been changed to the special.
Right, right. So this would be looking to put it, and then we'd still have a subsequent hearing about it, in its final form.
We would still be able to vote on the final form?
Yes, just like with the loitering bylaw.
Okay.
Yes. So I would, is there, so is that no questions, then? Other questions? I would make a motion that we proceed with including this on the warrant with two licenses, as geographically limited, as delineated.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Helm, discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Ms. McKay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Kate Smiley, you're up next. Article 15.
So I'm going to pass this off to the presentation, to the Historic District Commission themselves, and we'll be here for questions. Between minutes.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Dr. Anne Mason, Vice Chair of the Historic District Commission, and on behalf of the commission, I'm presenting our proposal to expand Plymouth Historic District. So as I'm sure most people in this room are familiar with, a local historic district exists to protect historic structures and landscapes within a community, that protects them from demolition and from inappropriate alteration. The goal is not to freeze a neighborhood in time to prevent any kind of change in use or, or development in that neighborhood, but rather to allow for thoughtful growth, so that it's a community review process by the Historic District Commission, according to published guidelines, to ensure that we are preserving the historic nature of our community, and what makes it unique here in Massachusetts and across the country. Over 120 cities and towns in Massachusetts do have historic districts, and Plymouth has had a historic district since 1973. That district has been expanded three times, in 1977, 1991, and 1995, but other areas of the town have very little protection from alteration, demolition, and incompatible development. And so you might ask, well, don't we have a demolition delay bylaw? Which we do. That is triggered when there's a proposed demolition of a building that's 75 years or older, and that demolition delay bylaw allows us to have an opportunity to explore options for preserving historically significant buildings. But it's important to note that that bylaw offers no protection after 12 months, so it's a delay, it's not a permanent preservation by any means. And you see the photograph here, which is of the 19th century foundry building, now the Safe Harbors Marina, which, again, as I know this board is very familiar with, has been the source of much conversation and a lot of incredibly creative and collaborative effort on the behalf of residents and neighbors, a real grassroots effort for historic preservation, but unfortunately, that, that delay has, has run out, and so we, we do not have any protection for this building, because it is outside of the existing historic district. And so really, that is the case, that was the impetus for the Historic District Commission to look at our existing boundaries and to see if we could potentially expand to avoid another similar case. So this is a map of our current district, which shows, it goes just about a short ways north of Sammaset Street, and a short, just, just south of Water Street, and encompasses most of the historic waterfront and Main Street corridor. But obviously, this is just a very, very small part of Plymouth, and actually, what we're proposing is not that much more. But it is the area that's directly adjacent to the existing district, to the north, or to, excuse me, to the southeast. It encompasses a total of 59 properties. And part of what we're, we're, why we're proposing the expansion in this direction is that this is a remarkably intact 19th century neighborhood. Again, it's adjacent to the existing district, it's also within the downtown and waterfront area, and that puts it as, as sort of high-risk area for future development that might be incompatible with its historic nature. And I think most importantly, this is a very special neighborhood, that is a visual reminder of the hardworking Plymouthians who were engaged in the town shipping, fishing, and, and other industries. This is a working-class neighborhood, this is where some of the earliest immigrant communities in Plymouth were, were based. And I think we all know that often Plymouth gets sort of siloed into this narrative about the pilgrims in 1620 and the first Thanksgiving, but it's so important to make sure that other areas, other histories in our town are also preserved, and this is one of those histories that is important to remember. The proposed expansion area would also include two municipal buildings on Lincoln Street, the, what was the Plymouth High School, and then for many years, the Town Hall, and now the administrative building for the school department, and then Nathaniel Moran Elementary School as well. As I mentioned, this area of expansion includes a historic 19th century working-class neighborhood, which is actually federally designated as the Bradford Union Street Historic District, listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1983, with several designations in terms of its significance. However, many people assume that if, if a neighborhood or a property is listed on the National Register, then they would have protection from alterations and demolitions, and that is not true. This is really an honorary designation, it offer, it's not a guaranteed protection against demolition or alteration. And it's really only local historic districts that provide effective protection for historic properties and neighborhoods. An establishment or expansion of a historic district does require a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and again, it's the Historic District Commission that reviews the projects, that works with applicants to make sure that their projects meet the published guidelines. The Historic District Commission can prohibit demolition if the structure is within the district. And it's also important to note that this is, again, a, a, a community review process, so the, the commission is appointed by the select board, we have open meetings, we invite the public, butters are notified, so that they can come and be part of that review process, and understand what's happening within their historic neighborhoods. So I won't go into great detail about what triggers review, what doesn't trigger review, or the process that the Historic District Commission operates under, but just to clarify, the Historic District... But just to clarify, the Historic District Guidelines only apply to physical changes to the exterior of the building when visible from a public way. So it's, 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 that includes a lot of things, but it does not include any interior features, anything that's not visible from a public way. It does not include routine maintenance, emergency repairs, or replacement of like-for-like. So we're not coming in to a new, this, this, if this proposal were to pass, we would not be coming into the new expanded district and demanding that everyone take off their vinyl siding and revert to something else overnight. It, it happens on a case-by-case basis as, as new development and new alterations are proposed. We do work closely with the, Mr. Hartman's office to, to accept applications. There are three types of certificates that residents can apply for. And then if there's, if it's necessary, there is a hearing process. We offer informal hearings to offer informal feedback on the proposal and then a formal hearing, if required, would proceed. And we do try as much as possible to work with residents and property owners so that they understand the process and so that they can understand why their project is or is not acceptable according to the guidelines. We did, as part of this study, to lead us to this proposed expansion, we did send out a survey, which had a forty-three percent return rate. And I think overwhelmingly, we saw that most of the respondents did, do think that this neighborhood is historically significant. And I think that many of them felt that it should be preserved. I think we also see, and we've heard through public hearings, that there certainly are concerns about how the, the commission's review process would impact private property owners. And I think we all are in agreement that we, we know that this does create new restrictions on the, the residents and property owners in this neighborhood. But the question, of course, is do the benefits, not only for the community, but also for those residents and property owners outweigh the impositions of new restrictions? And so we strongly believe that the property owners benefit from the protection of their neighborhood. We, again, this is not trying to keep them frozen in time. This is about adapting to change while preserving what's unique and historic about a community. It allows for protecting buildings from inappropriate alteration and from demolition. And it, it does allow, at the same time, that we incorporate new construction that is compatible with the existing landscape. Often, districts can sort of maintain a positive standard, which benefits both residents and visitors, which, you know, the stability of having a, a historic neighborhood, pride in that neighborhood, peace of mind, knowing that your, your neighborhood is, is protected and preserved. And finally, recent studies have shown that some historic districts, that historic districts or having a historic district designation can enhance property values. So that's also something that can be in a benefit to the town as a whole, as well as to property owners. So I'm happy to take questions and Mr. Hartman as well.
I just want to add, in addition to the survey, the commission had two public forums and then a public hearing itself. So there was quite a bit of community outreach that we had, inviting all of the residents in that area to those two public forums and then to the public hearing that the commission had, when they voted unanimously to move forward with this recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Canty, Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Helm.
Anne, good to see you. It's been a while. Can, could you go back to the survey slide?
Yes.
So, the second to last, overall, do you support the concept of expanding a historic district into your neighborhood? That's the definition of an even split. So could you expand on, I mean, in addition to the other forums, is it, is that about how it's shaken out or is there, what's the temperature?
Yeah, I'm going to say it would be closer to two-thirds. I think there's concern because I think a lot of the property owners are willing, at least the ones who attended, were, were willing to have this imposed on them, provided that the town didn't change its mind to the two bigger property owners, which is the yacht club and the Marina. So I think they felt like, well, we're willing to do this to protect the whole area, but we want to make sure that what you're proposing here stays intact. I think, and again, there is one resident here, I think, you know, she could speak to, she's been through this all with us for many months now.
And the, this district expansion includes two municipal buildings. I, I guess first and foremost, are there any municipal buildings in the current historic district?
Oh, sure. Town Hall. Town Hall, Spire Center, Memorial Hall. Think if there's anything else. Those are the, yeah. The Visitor Center.
The Haba Master Shack?
Um, no.
No, because that's on the wharf.
The Visitor Center.
So when we're making, I mean, obviously, this is a relatively new structure, so we haven't had to do that much, but when, with something like a Memorial Hall, what's, if we have to make revisions to those structures? Because there's been talk about with Nathaniel Morton, about using it, I mean, that was a proposed site for a town hall at one point, and there was talk about with Eleven Lincoln, instead of building this, buying the, the business next to it and expanding Eleven Lincoln at that time. Obviously, the town has made different choices as of now in those regards, but we've been around for four hundred years, we might as well plan for four hundred more. I don't know what we're going to want to do in the future. What, what's the, what does it do to the town's flexibility if it wants to do something with its own structure?
So again, it's really just exterior, what you're doing with the exterior of the building, and I, I think Town Hall here is a perfect example. We had an old county commissioner's office that required commission approval for demolition. And then any, any and all the work that happened here required commission approval. And I'm not aware that there was any big rub or any issue as we went through that to make sure that whatever they're doing in this building complemented the district. And again, anything that's happened at Memorial Hall, and mainly, that's cosmetic, but that's all been through the commission too.
Okay. And do you have any concerns about including those two structures?
Me personally?
Yeah.
I don't. It, it would be up to others and the, the school department to voice their concerns and to date, they really haven't.
They have not. Okay. Thank you.
Anne, great job. Just one question, was, was a larger area considered? Or did you settle on this as some kind of like a first, a step, first step or a beginning?
Yeah, so the commission kept on saying, well, what about North Plymouth? What about the Training Green? What about Stevens Field? What about? And so the, one of the biggest constraints here is that we have to go through a survey process. You submit that, that survey and preliminary report to the Historic District Commission, they have to approve it. I tried to do that on this one and quickly got over my head and we had to hire a consultant. So a lot of this is just the kind of manpower of what it takes to prepare that study, hire a consultant to do that for us, and, and work it through. So I think I'm always in favor of a more incremental approach. I don't necessarily know if this is the end. If this is successful, I think they'll be looking at other areas. And there's a limit to the size because the more you include, it's a two-thirds vote, it's a high bar, and also just the sheer amount of, of money that you need to prepare the study. So again, I could see us, if this is successful, looking at other parts of town and coming back. I would, also, not to go totally down this rabbit hole, there is a second thing called the Conservation District that's not as strict as, as a historic district, but is administered through the commission, that has a little less control, but still more control than what we'd have locally. So there may be other options we look at in other parts of town that aren't like a district, but also provide some level of control. But again, that's a rabbit hole I don't want to go down to tonight.
All right, thank you.
And I will add that Christopher Skelly's report, he was the consultant that we hired, is available on the Historic District Commission's page on the town's website, so you can read the full report. And it lists all the buildings, the fifty-nine properties that are included in the new expansion.
And I'll do her one better. If any of you would like the report, raise your hand and I'll have a copy on the desk tomorrow.
On this, the survey results, going to the same line that Mr. Canty pointed out, which to me is the most to-the-point and significant of all these questions. The other ones are nice. You know, do you think the Bradford Union, Lincoln Street are historically significant? But this is overall, do you support the concept of expanding the historic district into your neighborhood? You actually, yeah, you have a fifty-fifty split, but you also have twenty-nine percent of the seventeen who even chose to respond, who didn't respond at all.
Right.
What is the explanation of that anomaly? They just chose not to respond?
So all we can say is, we had the two forums, we invited and, you know, mailed out an invitation in both of those forums to all the property owners. We had the public hearing, we did the survey. So the best, that's the best we can do. But you're right, you know, twelve responses out of forty-two is not.
Well, you know, that's the way, it is actually a mailed response survey, that kind of.
Oh, it's a good response.
That's a, that's a good response.
But just because one of them is six-six on a seventeen.
Well, particularly interesting is that it's a fifty-fifty split, but, but twenty-nine percent, okay, less than a third, but you're getting close to it, chose not to respond at all.
Correct.
I mean, did they have the option of, I don't want to respond? Agnostic? It was just yes or no?
So this was a survey with a self-addressed return stamp, so they would have had to just fill out those one, two, three, four, five questions, put it in the envelope and mail it back to us.
Yeah, but seventeen did.
Yep.
Mailed it back, yet on that one question, thirty, twenty-nine percent of the people chose not to answer it.
They just didn't respond to that question.
Yeah, the, I mean, any thoughts as to, that's, that's not, I mean, any thinking from your forums and all that? What would it cause people to answer basically the other questions, but not this one? So it's just, that's the answer kind of.
Well, I think, I think.
Well, no, I mean, how, how can I get into the mind of forty-two property owners?
Well, I was kind of hoping that through your.
Again, I can tell you, my impression is, I think there was more than a majority who was supportive of it. There were certainly people who were opposed to it, adamantly opposed, some had reservations, but I would generally feel like there was more of a majority than not. But that's why we go through town meeting and the votes of town meeting.
Okay. Yeah, because the, the Historic Commission meeting that I attended, there were quite a number of people who did not like this idea. And they were concerned about my next question. And that was your like-to-like. Okay? If I were a homeowner and I had aluminum siding on my house and I wanted to replace it with vinyl siding, would I be able to? Or would I be forced to put clabberd or shingle?
Yeah. So first of all, if you're going from vine, from aluminum, anything's better, so.
Well, yeah, we all, everybody on the planet knows that. But it's like-to-like. And it's about, it's a history, it's not about better or worse, it's about historic.
Well, and I think that this is where, so if you're going from aluminum to vinyl, it's not like-for-like, because those are two different materials.
Correct. So what would happen to that homeowner?
Vinyl is not permitted per the guidelines, but there are other alternatives that are permitted.
Such as?
So yes, wood would be certainly one of the top preferences. There are other instances where we permit wood-like materials that are wood-like in appearance to be used instead. And actually, this is something that the district is looking to work on in the near future, is to actually go back and, and revise the guidelines because so many building materials have changed in recent years. And so we've been receiving a lot of requests from property owners to use new materials that maybe when the guidelines were written, didn't exist. And so it's a question of where do those materials fall? It's not a strict, you know, it's not as strict as to say you can only have wood in the historic district. If you look at the existing historic district, including new construction within the historic district, you'll see that there are many materials that have been allowed. Right, and we do, I mean, this is a question we get asked a lot because some people will say, well, there's a new construction within the district, it doesn't look very historic to me, what on earth are they thinking? But we do, again, it's, it's really based on the, the existing historic landscape and trying to fit within that landscape. So even within the small historic district that we do have, we have different types of landscapes. So Water Street is very different from Lyden Street. There are properties, as Mr. Hartman just said, from the nineteen eighties, as well as properties from the, the seventeenth century, buried within, you know, what, buildings that have expanded over time. So it's not as straightforward, it really, and that's why it's, it's, it requires the, the review of the Historic District Commission, why it's a process, it's a conversation of informal hearings and then a hear, formal hearings, if necessary, to take it on a case-by-case basis. So that's why it's, I think it was very hard at some of those public hearings to sort of be presented with a lot of hypotheticals and to say, well, well, in that case, maybe this would happen, maybe that would not happen. But I know that the Historic District Commission, like any board or committee within Plymouth, is responsible to the residents of Plymouth to enforce whatever guidelines they have consistently and clearly. And so that is certainly something that we, we strive to do. And we've heard some of those concerns from those residents and we know that, you know, we want to make sure we, we do that moving, moving forward, part of which, again, may be that review of those guidelines.
How you doing?
I'm okay.
Was there any discussion about expansion of this district, like in North Plymouth? When that stack came down at Cottage Park?
It's, it's just, it's just funding and horsepower because we don't have, if we had a full-time historian who provided staff for them, that could be, but again, I think that's, depending on how this goes, North Plymouth is something that they have talked about, so that's an area we're going to look at. Chiltonville, the Training Green, Stevens Field, those are all areas that have been mentioned. There are historic areas in Seaville and Manomet, too. So, yeah, I think if this is successful, they'll be looking at other areas and certainly some of the places in North Plymouth have been mentioned several times.
Okay, because I'm, I'm very concerned about it, and I did go to the, one of the forums, and I know Abby was there the same night I was there. And I did, you know, request that some of the stuff be looked at in North Plymouth as a resident. And I think after Water Street, I would be honest with you. The reason we're doing this district overhaul is because of what happened to the Marina. Okay, so are we going to wait till something happens, that's more happens, like in North Plymouth, and then try to react to that? I guess that's as plain and simple as I can put it. I mean, it should ought to be automatic that whatever the steps are, whether it's the steering committee or the residents, the, you know, and other parts of town too, I agree. But I mean, I, I just don't want it to be set aside because it's manpower or whatever the word, and I do appreciate that, Lee, I really honestly do. So I guess, how does North Plymouth's neighborhood, if you will, come before your board or bring it to your attention or, I know Everett will be right there, but besides Everett?
I, I mean, I think it's interesting because historically, historic preservation happens usually because something is lost.
Right.
And so that's often, we, we sort of just exist in a world where we think nothing will change or, or everyone understands that certain communities or buildings have importance, and then we wake up one day and they're gone and we say, well, how did this happen? And that's when we can see a grassroots movement and historic preservation efforts really are, are most effective when you have that grassroots support behind them. And so I think we, you know, the Historic District Commission also oversees the demolition delay by law, so if, if a property is proposed for demolition, it becomes before us. And most recently, we did have a property in North Plymouth that was built by the Gortage Company. And that was, again, something that has been, has, has created a lot of conversation about North Plymouth and about its historic structures. And I think from our point of view as a commission, you can only do so much, I, I guess you don't want it to be a top-down effort, right? We don't want to say this is one commission or this is the town imposing on a neighborhood, you know, this new restriction, this new designation that's going to, to impact the people who live there. You want to see people who live there or people in the community who care about that neighborhood, who care about that area, coming forward and saying, well, no, this is something we want to see happen. So I think in terms of starting the process, like we could certainly, we, we, the Historic District Commission interfaces with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, which is part of this process. And as Mr. Hartman mentioned, it does require pretty intensive surveys and studies of the, the districts that are proposed. But having that community, knowing that the community and the neighborhoods are in support of it, that's, that's really what, what moves things forward. And thankfully, we did have that support because we knew with the loss of the, or everything that happened with the Marina. And thankfully, we did have that support because we knew with the loss of the, or everything that happened with the Marina and all of the energy that went into that and recognizing the importance of the Bradford Union Street neighborhood, it seemed like the logical time to move forward with this small expansion. So, I'm hopeful. I mean, I love Plymouth and I'm obviously an advocate for historic preservation. So, I'm hopeful that we'll see more neighbors and residents getting excited and involved. And you may see more of these expansions coming before you. But I think we've heard at every meeting, you know, that there are concerns, which I completely understand. So, it's always that balance.
And we've got Edge School there. You know, there's been chatter of a new Cold Spring School. I don't know how old that one is, but, you know, those buildings there before they, you know, before it's too late. And all the cottage housing. There's history there and the library has already been moved. But it's just, you know, when the stack came down, people really, really went crazy. They were very upset.
Well, and unfortunately, that is one area where the Historic District Commission wouldn't have control over because that was an emergency demolition. So, it wasn't, if the building inspector says, you know, this is a hazard, then it comes down. It doesn't come before us, so.
Right, but before it got to the emergency situations, my point, because that's where I relived, I know what you're saying exactly. And I agree with what the law is. But my point is, why I'm even bringing this up is to get to it before it gets to those kinds of reason. And, you know, I mean, I hear all kinds of thing, and I don't know if it's true that that was supposed to be kept on-site and be maintained by the current developers. And I don't know if that's true or not, but, and you probably don't know the answer to that either. So, you hear these things, some of the things might just make up themselves, I don't know. But I do know that there's a lot of development and now with the MBTA thing over the, over part of North Plymouth, they're already starting on South Spoon Street with the housing. I sat in a hearing one night, I was in town hall or something, but I sat in on that. So, if they're going to start there, then you know they're going to go. So, that's another reason I'm bringing this up.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just because you keep bringing up the smokestack, you know, some of the fallout that came out of the smokestack coming down was, and I had talked to the, at the time, the chairman of the CPC on utilizing CPC dollars and then hiring an individual to do a complete analysis of all of our historic structures. So that if we had the smokestack on this list of historic structures, we could have been a little bit more proactive to try to preserve that. So, to your point, so we don't get to an emergent situation where we have to remove it right away. So, you know, we have a new staff person coming on CPC probably in the next two weeks, I would imagine. And so, maybe this is something that this individual can work on to develop this inventory of the various historic structures throughout town that we want to preserve.
Preservation Massachusetts, which has its offices here in Plymouth, they actually have an endangered properties list. And I mean, I think that's something that, you know, potentially between the CPC and the HDC, it might be worthwhile to create for Plymouth, right? What are the properties that we consider endangered? Or even if they're not maybe endangered, but, you know, properties that we would want to make sure are clearly identified as being important to Plymouth's history and future, so.
Well, take it as an invitation that I'd like to have you come back at a future meeting and give you some docket time and let's go over your list, let's take a look at it. Because I think if we bring it to the public's and town meeting members' eyes, then we can do something, be a little proactive about and have a conversation. That we're not, you know, like in the stack situation, if you will. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Canty?
Do you anticipate looking to expand the district further in the near future? Or are you, do you think this is sufficient for the present?
We do not, I mean, we do not have any funding right now to do another study that would be. Oh, we do have funding apparently. It would be a question about funding primarily.
Okay.
And again, what I've heard from the board, the commission themselves and from a staff standpoint, a lot of it depends on how this goes. So, if this is defeated or it does not pass, I think that will generally probably change the approach they might want to undertake. If this is successful, then I think that is encouragement to look at either North Plymouth or the Training Green or some other area and come back with some additional ones. We've been talking about this for over a year, so it's not something that would show up at Fall Town Meeting. But again, it takes a lot of public outreach. We want to meet with the neighbors like we did here three different times. It would be that kind of outreach, do the study work. So, yes, I don't know if it's going to be even next April, but that would be something that they would work on moving forward. If this fails, that might be a different story.
But this can't be expanded.
No, no. Yeah, so this is it. The only thing this could ever do is contract. This couldn't be expanded on town meeting floor. So, nobody could make a motion to make this larger. It has to be either this size, probably could be reduced, but it couldn't be enlarged on town meeting floor.
And before you sit down, you mentioned another rabbit hole that you didn't want to get into. Nevertheless, I'd like to ask you at least a couple of questions about that. So, what was the, it was a conservation?
It's called the Conservation District.
And what does it conserve, just historic or?
So, you would designate, yeah, so it'd be the same type of thing. And again, it's, all I can say at this point, we'd have to put the comparison together. It's less restrictive than a historic district, but still provides a level of protection to the historic properties in that neighborhood. So, again, thinking of some areas where maybe there'd be a lot of opposition to a district, this site makes complete sense because it's already part of, it abuts the district and it's in the National Register District. Other areas of towns, that that might be another tool to look at as an approach. And again, I can't give you particulars right now, but a conservation district, if you go to the MassHistorics website, they explain it there, just has less level of restriction than you do in a historic district.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. There's no other questions? Favor of the board?
Move approval?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Mahoney, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Quintil, I agree with your sentiments. We need to continue working on this. This is a great first step and hopefully, this is passed overwhelmingly on town meeting floor because I do want to see other areas protected.
Mr. Canty?
I'm going to vote in favor of this. I would say, based on the survey results, it may be worthwhile to continue to do some outreach between now and town meeting just because 42 mailed, 17 returned, only 12 responded to, did you, do you support this coming into your neighborhood? It's not great numbers. So, that is going to give some people some pause. And I get that you can't get anybody, you can't force anybody to put something in the mail or pick up the phone if you call them or open their door if you knock on it. But that number may be problematic down the road, just to flag that for you. But I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
And you do realize we're in a community that only 14% votes.
We've gotten it up to 15 recently. Must have been you.
Yeah. We'll see it return to 10 next time.
All righty, where were we? Comments? Right, exactly. Any other comments? All right, Mr. Blitzer?
I'm going to vote yes. I think this is something we've needed for a while.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 16? Mr. Hartman?
So, demolition, no, which one is 16? So, why don't we do 19 demolition delay? So, this, 19, so for a number of years now, the demolition delay bylaw has been in place. It's been a great tool to help preserve historic properties. What the commission is finding, they meet twice a month. The initial bylaw had a 14-day response time that the commission had to respond. And what we're finding is that 14 days is just too tight. It's not giving them the proper time to look at something or to give the property owner their due process to have it thoroughly looked at, forcing reaction more than properly. So, they're just asking to extend that timeline from 14 days to 21 days just to give a little more time so that when a petition comes in, they're not forced to react to, oh, do we have to determine this significant right away? Do we have to have a special hearing? Do we have to rush this? Let's just give it one more week so there's enough time with a committee that meets every other week to look at it properly. So, again, just a seven-day extension to what's already there.
Any questions? Mr. Hartman, Mr. Blitzer?
Lee, it's a year delay.
So, what happens is, somebody comes in, the way the bylaw is written now, somebody comes in and says, I want to demolish a cottage building.
Right, yep.
The board has, commission, I keep saying board, the commission has 14 days to determine whether or not they want to hold a public hearing. They meet every other week, so sometimes that really creates a problem. The 21 days just gives them one more week so they can look at it and say, yes, this is historically significant, we want to hold a public hearing. Or no, it's not, you can demolish it. So, it's just to make that initial first review.
No, I know, but the demolition can be.
It's for one year.
One year, okay. That's not changing. Thanks.
Mr. Helm?
Once the commission determines that it warrants a hearing and they don't have to determine that it warrants a hearing, they can just let it slide by. So, I would say that you mentioned the benefit being to the property owner. I would say the benefit of adding this extra week is also to people who have a problem with what the, with the demolition.
Yes.
You know, as we saw in North Plymouth, okay? Once that determination that a hearing is necessary, how long of a delay or a timeframe before the hearing? And that, I take it, is not changing?
Do you know?
Is it 30 days?
Well, it's less than 30 days. The hearing has to be posted, but it's less than 30 days. I would say.
Is it 30 days from receipt of the demolition request or?
Yeah, three weeks is what it says now.
Three weeks from the determination that a hearing is necessary, not from the receipt of the demolition request?
Right, right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I move we recommend this article to town meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
It's within 30 days. Within 30 days.
Article 14, Mr. Hartman.
And which one is that?
ADUs.
Okay, so.
Accessory dwelling units.
So, this is one that's been around. This has come to the town twice before. It's a goal of the master plan. It's a goal of the Housing Production Plan to provide accessory dwelling units. The Affordable Housing Trust has reviewed this as in recommending that town meeting adopt this bylaw. 2019 Fall Town Meeting, this came more or less the same proposal. It had just, I think it was four votes short of a two-thirds vote of town meeting, had a majority. It was voted 5-0 by the Select Board, 5-0 by the Planning Board and 9-2 by Advisory and Finance. In 2021 at Fall Town Meeting, a similar bylaw came in. We thought we had done it in such a way that allowed it to be a majority vote of town meeting. But because there was language in there to give some flexibilities with a special permit, it was ruled that that was a two-thirds vote. Again, 5-0 vote by the Planning Board, 5-0 vote by the Selectmen in place at the time. And that was a 12-0 vote at the Advisory Finance Committee. So, the only real change in this bylaw from what you've seen before is that the special permit process has been removed. Most of the allowed use that was there before is here now. The special permit was only for extenuating circumstances. This will require a majority vote, not two-thirds vote at town meeting. I would point out that right now, we have a bylaw called Family Suite. You might also know it as an in-law apartment. We have over 540 of those already in town. This is very much like the in-law apartment we have today. The only difference is, you have to have a shared entrance. And the family suite could be up to 1,200 square feet in size. This one can't exceed 900. So, this is a 900-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. It could be attached or it could be separate and can't be used for short-term rental. And it has to be on a property that's owner-occupied. So, again, not to go into any more detail than that, but it's something that I think the community has supported before. We're hoping the third time's a charm.
Any questions for Lee? That was an easy one. Oh, Mr. Helm?
Just a point of clarification, Lee. You mentioned that ADUs are in the master plan? That was very advanced for that master plan. Are they really in there?
While we don't have, Steve Bolton, Planning Board, while we don't have a housing section in our existing master plan, we did have a specific reference to the community's desire to have accessory dwelling units as part of the housing options available. And that continues to this very day. As Mr. Helm knows from the Senior Task Force Needs Survey, which will be coming to this board shortly, accessory dwelling units is one of the housing options that our seniors want as well. It's actually one of the very unique aspects of housing in Plymouth. It is the one type of housing that everybody seems to have an interest in having available to them as an option because it meets so many potentially different needs.
Thank you. Count me impressed by the foresight.
Any questions? And the board's wish?
I motion we recommend this to town meeting.
I'll second, second of a discussion.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion?
I'd just like to say that owner-occupied and no short-term rentals, that's all I was worried about. And that's great, so I'm 100% for this.
Mr. Canty?
Some of the, this has come forward before. I was in support of it in prior iterations. Some of the objections to it seem to be that if this were passed, that neighborhoods would double in size. I just want to remind folks that this is optional, it's not compulsory. If you do not want an accessory dwelling unit, no one is going to force that upon you. That was an odd counterpoint to the previous versions of this proposal. I agree with Mr. Blitzer that owner-occupied and prohibiting short-term rentals is definitely an important factor of this that should be emphasized as well. But I think this is just another tool. We talked earlier about tools and toolboxes. This is one that can help people keep their homes, live in the smaller portion of the home if they're unable to keep the larger one up as they age or have supplemental income, you know, or helping out a family member. More and more people are living at home for longer periods in their lives now. So, I think there's a lot of benefits to this. Housing becomes, is becoming increasingly unaffordable in Plymouth. So, I think there's a lot of reasons to do this and not a lot of good reasons, in my opinion, not to do it. So, I hope that this enjoys support, not only from this board, but from the wider community as well. But thanks for bringing this before us.
Any other comments? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous. Thank you. Article 18, multi-family overlay district.
Thank you. We have Judy Barrett from Barrett Planning Group here tonight too remotely. So, I'm going to let her and Judy, given the time and the length already, and they've seen this before. So, we can kind of go a little faster on this one than maybe we'll do tomorrow. So, Judy Barrett.
Welcome.
So, you're welcome. Thank you, board members. Lee, you're going to advance the slides, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because bear in mind, I can't see them.
We're on the first slide.
Okay. There we go, great. So, I think as the board knows, the MBTA Communities Law, which is what we're talking about, comes out of the Economic Development Bond. which is what we're talking about, comes out of the Economic Development Bond Bill in two thousand and twenty-one. It's a new zoning requirement, it's being rolled out in phases depending upon the classification of your community under guidelines established by the Commonwealth. And the purpose of the law is really, there are three, and it's to address the Commonwealth's housing crisis, to encourage multifamily housing development, and to boost the Commonwealth's housing supply. Next slide, please. This is simply a map, I'm sure you've seen it before. It outlines the area covered by the law. The different colors in the map simply represent the classification of the communities that are affected. They have different deadlines for compliance and so forth. As you can see on the map, you are classified as a quote adjacent community, so your deadline to have zoning and compliance is the end of this year. Next slide, please. There are basic requirements that are kind of in the statute, that, it's important to understand the legislature adopted this, this didn't just come out of a state agency's desire to boost housing. The legislature wrote into the law certain basic requirements, which include multifamily housing as a right, at least at fifteen units an acre, without age restrictions, without size restrictions, you know, bedroom restrictions or anything like that. Ideally, the housing would be located within a half mile of a commuter rail station, if you have one, and the district must be of quote reasonable size. And that's sort of the parameters of the statute. So everything else that you're going to hear about is really tied to guidelines that the legislature asked the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities to create, so the communities like Plymouth would know whether they actually complied with the law. Next slide, please. A district of reasonable size is generally fifty acres. Sometimes it's a little bit less, but you know Plymouth is a large town and area, so the fifty-acre minimum does apply to you. In addition to, you know, having to have that fifteen units an acre and the other content that's in the statute, there's also this concept in the guidelines around zoned capacity, which is a target number of units that your district needs to be designed to accommodate as a matter of zoning. And the district has to be, pretty much, most of it has to be kind of contiguous parcels, and you can't have small pockets here and there that would not constitute reasonably usable development sites. So contiguous, any part of the district has to consist of at least five acres of contiguous land. Zoned capacity is a concept in the guidelines, it is not in the legislation, but it was a device that HLC, I will call them that from here on, came up with to try to establish sort of a fair playing field for what would constitute reasonable compliance with the law. So it's the number of units that could be created if the zoning you write were to produce housing. And your minimum requirement is two thousand eight hundred and seven units. It's really a function of a percentage of your Census two thousand and twenty housing supply. It does not, is not limited to vacant land, as you will see shortly. It is not a requirement to construct units. It is not concerned with existing units. So that you may have areas that make sense, that already have existing housing, and that's fine. That existing housing doesn't reduce your twenty-eight hundred units, it's just part of the mix. It doesn't require new housing development. It doesn't require your community to pay for infrastructure to support development. It doesn't override the State Wetlands Act or the Massachusetts Environmental Code, meaning Title V, and it doesn't provide specific options for communities to seek waivers or exemptions from compliance. Permitting can be subject to site plan review, which is part of the proposed legislation in Plymouth. Site plan review is a way to kind of review a plan for permitted use to ensure that it provides for safe vehicular and pedestrian access. You can review architectural design within reason, consideration of landscaping and screening of adjacent properties, things that are typical of a site plan review process. You are allowed to do that. That is written into the proposed bylaw. Communities may require up to ten percent affordable units, that is in your, your proposed legislation as well. And the definition of affordable is not, as far as the guidelines are concerned, limited to affordable as we use that term in Chapter forty B. Most communities nonetheless are using that definition so that any affordable units which are created will count toward the Chapter forty B subsidized housing inventory. Next slide, please. Impact of non-compliance, we are often asked about this. So the statute, going back to Section three A of Chapter forty A, identifies three specific programs that quote non-compliant communities will be categorically ineligible for. And those include the One Stop for Growth, which we used to call Mass Works, the Housing Choice Program, and then Local Capital Projects Fund, which is a source that is very important to local housing authorities. So those three sources are specifically identified. More recently, Housing and Livable Communities came out with a list of additional programs that operate under the executive branch of state government, for which communities would lose competitiveness points if they are not in compliance with Section three A. So, you know, I think you probably are very well aware Plymouth has done an amazing job, if you go to the next slide, I think we have some of that information on there, Lee, you know, an amazing job that, with getting grants and using them for public benefit in town. So it's just important for people to understand kind of the ramifications here of not complying. Next slide. We've done a fair amount of outreach on this. Lee and I kind of working together as a team, or my colleague Lauren Lind, who I think you probably met back in October. But in August and then in September, Lee Hartman and I did a couple of community meetings to try to get the word out about the law and get some input from people about locations we had been asked to look at. Before we ever did those meetings, the planning department had referred several areas of town to us to review in accordance with the Housing and Livable Communities Compliance Guidelines, talk about that in a minute. We reviewed those areas and kind of profiled them in those August and September meetings to try to get some feedback. That, of course, was also brought to you in the planning board in a joint meeting in October, and it kind of based on the direction from the boards, we proceeded to work more on the actual zoning and refine the boundaries of those areas. So there's a lot of information about all of this on the planning board's webpage for those who are interested in finding out more. For the analysis, you know, it's really, it's a tool that requires geographic information system technology as well as Excel. The town provided, through the planning department, provided us with a pretty extensive list of potential parcels that could be reviewed. We looked at those in GIS, and we analyzed those parcels using Housing and Livable Communities Excel model that determines how much housing could actually be built in those locations, based on some assumptions about density and building height and lot coverage and so forth. I think you can go to the next slide, Lee, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, the model really does a few things that are critically important. One is to be able to say, yes, you could develop this at at least fifteen units an acre, after you deduct certain land that would not be considered developable within the guidelines, wetlands and so forth. It does not therefore allow you to consider things like protected conservation land, or public land, or most public property. You know, we, we would input to the model things like, well, let's assume three or four stories, let's assume a certain number of parking spaces per unit and so forth, and the model will tell us, if you look at this configuration of parcels, yes, you can build at least at fifteen units an acre, and you will meet your zoned capacity target, or you won't. And if you won't, then we had to keep playing with the assumptions to get to the point where you would kind of check all the boxes required to satisfy both the statute and Housing and Livable Communities guidelines. Next slide, please. So, Lee, I think this is where you pick up.
Sure. So if you recall, we had a joint meeting with the select board and the planning board to talk about the various options and the things we looked at. And at that meeting, the direction we had, I think overwhelmingly by both boards, was to take credit for development that has already existed, and to focus as best as possible the development in the northern part of town. So we have four sites that we are recommending. The first one, we hope it is Cordage Park, and see if this laser lights up enough. And, guess not. So the first one is Cordage Park, and again, this is superimposed not over the commercial areas, which are to the right of the pond there. There we go. So it's not the commercial areas that exist, it is where the existing multifamily apartments are under construction, or the area along the coastline which are already in the forty R pre-approved. The total in this area is approved through the forty R development for six hundred and seventy-five units already. So although some of it's not constructed, it is already pre-approved. The next site is the area where we have the Sawyer's Reach, the forty B Walk, and then the approved but not yet constructed Claremont Property. So again, we're off of Commerceway here, Plimpton Road, Kingston Town Line here, this is all behind Dick's Sporting Goods or next to Walmart. And again, areas that either have been completely developed already with multifamily housing, or are slated to be developed and will be developed shortly. Next one is the Oasis Property, Home Depot Road, Route three, this is Long Pond Road here, so this is the area behind Home Depot. Again, this is already fully constructed multifamily development. And then the last site is the multifamily areas of the Pine Hills. So we have the new, no, this isn't Rowan, this is Hanover, the new Hanover Apartments next to the highway, the existing Mark Development, the Avalon multifamily here, and then the Rowan Brazuto one on the Village Green. So again, areas that have already been developed. So those are the areas. I don't know if you want to have questions now at all, but those are the four areas that we've modeled, and Barrett Planning Group has determined that they do comply with the model. Okay, and then this just shows you, again, our target number is two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven, sorry, two thousand eight hundred, and we're over that. It's impossible to hit that number exactly, and you want to have a little bit of a buffer. But again, we have those areas, and we do with the model meet compliance. And then I'll let Judy talk a little bit about this, but again, I think when we look at this, the likelihood of seeing any significant more development coming out of this is negligible, if not zero. We're taking credit for the multifamily we've already done. So Judy, I'll let you take over with the zoning bylaw summary.
Sure, yeah, and I think it is important to recognize that essentially what the town has done by trying to prioritize these four locations is exactly what Lee just said, is to take credit for what Plymouth has already done, as really kind of a leader in, in boosting the Commonwealth's housing supply with or without the MBTA Communities Law. So the application of it in Plymouth very much is around, this is what we've already done, and we want it to be recognized. And we want it to be recognized in a way that essentially accounts for most of the development capacity in any of these locations. So the proposed zoning to implement the MBTA Communities Law is a quote overlay district, you're probably familiar with that concept, but it's a kind of district that essentially lays on top of existing zoning, and in this case does not disturb any of those underlying requirements. It's an overlay with four sub-districts, the four that Lee just referred to, and I just want to make it clear that when we say it complies, we mean that the four sub-districts together enable the town to comply with the state guidelines. There are some different dimensional and density requirements for the sub-districts, which makes sense, you're all familiar with these areas, they're not built the same way. There are basic standards in the proposed bylaw around parking and building placement and orientation and landscaping and so forth, so that you try, if something were to be proposed, to have development that's attractive and fitting for a town of Plymouth's character. It relies on the existing zoning bylaw for any controls that are not necessary to write into the overlay district. This is really pretty consistent with the way other overlays have been done in Plymouth, and we tried to follow the lead on those as much as possible. Town Council has reviewed the proposed zoning and provided comments, and that's really where we are.
And if I could just conclude before we go to any questions, compliance is mandatory. So we talk about the penalties for grants, but the state has made it clear, compliance is mandatory. So in addition to the potential loss of those grants, there is the potential for litigation with the town if we refuse to or fail to comply with this law. Second thing, two other things. Next thing to point out is that this is again, like the ADU now, a majority vote of town meeting to pass, not a two-thirds, like most zoning bylaws. And final thing is that the planning board, when they reviewed this, there were four members present, and they unanimously voted to recommend this for town meeting. Thank you.
Right.
Any questions for Mr. Hartman or Ms. Barrett? Mr. Canty?
So, Lee, I know it was mentioned earlier, but that the overlay wouldn't interfere with the zoning of the, the other zoning that those districts are subject to. So just to be clear, I assume the answer is yes, but with the Pine Hills being included, it doesn't have any impact on their Osmond or anything?
Nothing, no.
Okay.
And again, I think if somebody ever tried to naggle away at the Pine Hills, it would be almost impossible because that special permit runs with the land. So they're governed by that special permit. So it would be very difficult to even try to do that.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Hartman? Can we get an Osmond for North Plymouth, Lee?
Can you get what?
An Osmond.
An Osmond in North Plymouth?
Yeah, good luck.
You kind of do with the forty R at Cordage Park. I mean, that's actually as close to an Osmond without all the open space.
I just try to bring a smile here. Motion by Mr. Mahoney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Helm, discussion? Excuse me. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much, and Judy, thank you. We'll see you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Yes, thank you so much. Goodbye.
Nice job, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Article twenty-one, citizens' petition, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system. Mr. Pacico, I believe. I think I've seen you here a few times.
I have a handout that reviews it, but do you guys want it, or I'm just going to very briefly go?
We have some information.
Great, great. Mark Pacico, precinct four, good evening. So I'm back with another amendment to this solar bylaw. Largely gets done what we wanted to do in the fall, but I think does so in more straightforward language. So I'll just quickly begin. The first is change to existing language with regard to the bond. Right now, the bond is based on two megawatts, or more, you have to put forth a bond. Technology changes, two megawatts right now is X number of acres, in five years it may be one acre, in ten years it may be on top of your house. That didn't make much sense to us, so instead we said, let's change that to a size, and we settled on four acres. I think anything less might be a bit of a undue burden on a developer. Certainly, four is about a Walmart supercenter, just so you have an idea in your head. So anything that or over, they would have to put forth a bond. Second change, we had come in last time asking that the notification change, the notification would be changed to seven hundred feet, should someone be particularly aggrieved. You know, they can see that's right there. Instead, in working with planning, and Mr. Barrett is great to work with, I just want to point that out, we settled on language that it asks the developer, if there's a situation beyond three hundred feet, or a resident certainly will be affected, they're encouraged to notice them. What I hope with this, and it doesn't have force of law, I understand that, but what I hope with this is we're signaling to developers that we're serious about protecting residents' interests, and we put the onus on the developers to do that. Secondly, in a larger conversation, I hope it starts a conversation about changing notification for certain uses in the future. And I will be there to speak to that if that ever comes, you'll see me again. So the last change is a new section. That is titled Standards and Conditions. We had the view chain, view, what did I call it before? The view shed section here? That was me being way too cute, and I'm sorry about that. This is easier. The intent of the bylaw, as it stands today, notes that it is to minimize the impacts of solar facilities on the character of neighborhoods, property values, civic, historical, and environmental resources of the town, health and safety. So this new section kicks in when those conditions are endangered, if you will. So, "An applicant shall present to the town for planning board review and recommendation a stamped engineered plan, which includes screening as defined by two one three of the bylaw, which accomplishes the goal of largely minimizing the impacts of solar." which accomplishes the goal of largely minimizing the impacts of solar facilities on surrounding residential properties. The impacts are the ones that I just noted to you that are already there in the bylaw, so we're not reinventing the wheel here. Secondly, the Planning Board shall make a recommendation. The issue that brought me to this, it was out on Black Hat Road, the plans have no screening on them. The plans got through Planning Board, Planning Department, and Inspection Services without any screening on them, even though the bylaw kind of says you're supposed to. Now, we're making sure planning does, in fact, do this. And you should also know quickly, the Black Hat Road issue, the developer there, and particularly the engineer in charge have stepped up and have agreed to sit down with us and work towards screening. So, we're going to get that fixed. But we're still going forward, so this doesn't happen again. The last piece of this that I think is important to note is that we are putting forth the severability clause that I think a couple of you had concern with. We're making sure it's in this one. We won't have to amend it from the floor. So, I'd love to, if you have any questions, love to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Pacico? Mr. Helm?
Have you taken this in front of the Energy Committee?
We have, and I'm very happy to say, I'm going to let Patrick say.
Good evening. For the record, Patrick Farah, Planning Staff. So, this did go before the Planning Board. It was voted in favor for zero. And also, throughout this whole process, the second process, we did, Mr. Pacico did go before the Energy Committee, and they did provide a letter of support in favor of this new language. So, just so the audience will know, at the Fall Town Meeting, there was actually a three-vote split, so it failed only by three votes. Mr. Pacico and I, we sat down several times over the past few months, and we went line by line over the whole language. And this provides a little more, I don't want to say teeth, but some more tools for the Planning Board for recommendations to the Building Commissioner for screening. There is, or there was actually, or there is, I should say, right now in 20711, measures for screening requirements, only based on the zoning bylaw definition 201-3. This language, which Mr. Pacico was just talking about, gives a little more detail and provides the Planning Board and staff to provide more outreach to the applicant as well as the community, the abutting community that's going to, that may or may not be affected. And I have to just mention about the Black Cat Solar Project. That was a difficult project because it is sited in the middle of a cranberry bog where everyone's going to see it. The screening measures, while it was discussed during the review, because I performed the site plan review on that project, it was going to be extremely difficult to provide any type of screening. The staff is actually glad that there's been additional discussions with Beals and Thomas, the engineer on site, about reaching out with these neighbors and looking at additional screening methods. So, in conclusion, going through this for the second time, staff, we don't have any issue. We're actually in support of this additional language. It just kind of helps out the bylaw. As you all know, zoning bylaws or any type of legislation is kind of like a breathing, living mechanism thing. It always evolves as time goes on because of new situations that prop up. Town Council, Town Council reviewed it? I don't remember Town Council reviewing it, so.
In other words, we go with that. Yes, I know.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Bletzer.
So, Black Hat Road, I know when you first talked to me about this, I drove down there. I drove down there, and it's such a beautiful area. And, you know, all I could, I just envisioned all those ugly solar panels on top of the box. And so, but you're, they're going to put screening in there, and I know it was much more than 300 feet.
Yeah.
You know, so that was a real concern. But you're okay, this language will?
In the future, yes. And in the case of that particular case, you know, mitigation does not mean completely screening it. They'll still see it, but you're breaking up the view shed. And then, so something will be done. But in the future, you know, again, you're minimizing the impact. You're not looking to completely, because you never can completely screen something. This is a minimization. It's a balance.
And what about the other concern, that in 10 years or 20 years, when the panels aren't working or they're not making money on it or whatever, and they just walk away, who's responsible for taking those panels down or?
So, in the future, right now, that's tagged to 20 megawatts, or 2 megawatts, I'm sorry. We're changing that. Anything over four acres, the developer would have to put up a bond to take them down. Below that, still.
Because I know that was a real concern, that that would happen.
Yeah.
So, this is all covered, and everybody's happy, Planning Board. That's good. Great. Good job working together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Through the chair, I just wanted to provide just a little more clarification on the notification. On some projects, there may be abutting neighborhoods that will exceed the 700-feet notification distance or 1,000 feet or 300 feet. This language will allow, or will strongly encourage the petitioner to provide that notification. So, in, with this language, it actually creates.
That's voluntary, though.
Correct. But as staff, discussing these projects with the applicant, you know, we can actually strongly encourage the applicant to reach out to those neighborhoods, and these are butters, that may well exceed that 300-foot threshold or even a 700-foot threshold based on the type of project that's being presented.
Any other questions or comments? Labor of the board?
I'll make a motion. Can we approve this?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bletzer, second by Mr. Helm. Discussion? Mr. Bletzer.
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Have a great night, guys.
Great job working together, everybody.
Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Do you think we have anyone online? Would you like to speak up? Please, come on up. Have a good night.
Is your green light on? And just like?
Oh, Kate Zakarick, 26 Bradford Street. I know you all approved this already, but I wanted to make just a couple of points. One, that survey was the starting point. Since then, I think the neighborhood has made progress. The biggest hang-up, honestly, with people who have concerns, and I think a lot of them have been addressed because they were sort of oversimplifying the process, you know, I don't want to be told what color white to paint my house. You know, those things, myths have been, you know, dispelled. Also, they, some of my neighbors are concerned that, you know, we don't want a reduction in the area that's proposed. In other words, you know, we want the Marina property to be, you know, in there, the schools, like the big three, you know, the yacht club, Marina, and the municipal properties. It's important because, you know, we're worried about what's going to happen down the road because we were sort of blindsided with the Marina. So, that's. And lastly, I just want to say that I think that, you know, we're doing this expansion not, I feel not just because of what happened with Marina. You know, I knew that my house was special when I bought it, and I knew it was special when I was, had the pleasure of hosting the vernacular architectural forum last spring at my home. And I've never seen people so excited to look at a basement or to look at timbers. My house is one of the few workers cottages left with intact interiors that they were able to get into. You know, it's not, I'm sure there are lots more. But, you know, they saw a lot of very grand homes. But, you know, mine was special. They returned later that summer, same group, with some students who were part of a summer program. And, you know, same thing, took a tour. You know, it was meaningful to them, and that tells me that it's meaningful. So, it's not just, you know, that, you know, the Marina happened. It's also that it's an important neighborhood. And me, I'd like to see, you know, the historic expansion go, you know, five miles north, south, and west if it were up to me immediately. But obviously, I'm in full support of this, and I thank you for supporting us as well. But I just want to, you know, dispel any reservations that you might have had with the survey, because I think if we gave it again today, it would be different. So, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn, anybody online want to speak on the public comment? Did you change your mind? Probably was Charlie. Just a joke. Derek, have anything on the Town Manager's report?
Yeah, just a few items. So, first, I just want to just let the board know that Brad, Assistant Town Manager, has been working with various departments on presenting next week the proposal for outdoor dining for the board to consider. So, that'll be an agenda item for next week. I also wanted just to let the board know that last week, our Health and Human Services Department held their two public forums to discuss the opioid remediation funds. And so, those were well-attended. We heard a lot of great stories. In fact, we heard today that a lot of the nonprofit organizations were excited to know that the town is partnering with them on these funds. Now that that phase is complete, effective tomorrow, we will release the RFP to all those organizations that would qualify for these funds, and they'll have 30 days to respond. So, that'll be posted on the website. So, we're looking forward to those applications. Also, last night, Pine Hills held their traffic mitigation meeting for Clock Road. Again, another well-attended meeting. We received a lot of positive feedback, the public works and Pine Hills engineering staff. Right now, what still needs to be determined, to be determined, is whether or not bike lanes will be included in this design. So, more to come on that one. And then, as I mentioned last week, Station 2 is now complete. The firefighters moved in last week. Things are going extremely well. And then, so, there's an invitation for the Select Board to know that on February 8th at 4:30 at the fire station, the Building Committee will be holding a tour, and they have invited the Select Board to attend. So, again, February 8th at 4:30, which is next 30, there'll be a tour of the new renovated Station 2 in West Plymouth. The Water Street Project continues to move forward. They are driving sheathing in the ground as we speak, and so, we'll continue to work with Northern Contracting on not only the settlement agreement but with the completion of this project. Article submission closes this Friday, so every board and committee member and staffer who's watching this right now, just as a reminder, the special town meeting warrant closes this coming Friday at noon time for any articles. And then, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention just two items. So, during, in the beginning of our health insurance negotiations, one of the items we brought up to the unions was the OPAP valuation, or what I call our OPAP liability. And so, at the time, our OPAP liability was $994 million. So, it was pressing $1 billion. Lynn Barrett, our Finance Director, just reported this past week that the new valuation came in, and it's based upon the new PEC agreement, and it's dropped by $205 million. So, we are now at $587 million. And the finance folks think that is in large part due to this historic PEC agreement that the Select Board negotiated. So, congratulations.
I think that's the first time I've done that.
So, significant savings for our OPAP valuation.
Good job. By all.
Absolutely. So, I guess I should have ended my statement with that. On the negative side of the ledger, you know, we were really hoping that state aid was going to pull through for us. Again, we budgeted no increase in this, in our FY '25 budget proposal. Happily, we did do it that way because we received our new net state aid, and it's only $188,000. So, we're not going to get much help from the state this year to help balance our budget, but as you know, we did submit a balanced budget. We were just hoping we'd receive a few additional dollars to help relieve the stress on our taxpayers. So, more to come on the FY '25 budget. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
If I may, Brad, what was the reason that they figured that we really didn't need any state aid? I mean, did I hear somewhere that they said because we can afford it on our own? Is that a true?
Yeah. The Chapter 70 formula is extremely complex, but the two big components to it that went in were the valuation of the town and also what the income level is with the town. And again, I have to look back at the report, but I believe they used, they were using 2021's income through all individuals that live in the town of Plymouth, and that number went up by 12.81%. So, when that all gets worked out in the whole formula, what it comes down to is the state's essentially saying the town has the money to pay for education, and that's why we got minimum state aid for our Chapter 70 funds.
Thank you. Well said. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Brandis, the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Mahoney?
Derek, the tour of that fire station is a week from Thursday at 4:00 or 4:30?
February 8th.
It's at 4:30, next Thursday, February 8th, 4:30 PM at the station.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? All righty. New business? Old business? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for watching. Have a wonderful week.